Over to you, Norwood, we'll start with allegiance. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call roll please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Brodack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Uh, no form of council recognitions tonight, so we'll move into public comment. Anyone would like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name.
I'm a new visitor out here. My name is John Mason. I'm here to represent members out of Anderson Field that pay probably ninety dollars, nine-hundred dollars or more a year just to get a little grass seed or something. I put some photographs of the railways and everything else. And as far as playing golf, it's not golf, it's cocaine we play out there. Passes out to people. Do you like a copy, man? Maybe you want to redo your law?
I'll take them so you can continue to speak.
Maybe you could buy some grass seed or fertilizer.
I don't have much there.
Oh, is it? That's all right, I can still walk.
That's okay.
Well, anyway, I want to give you a little background. Since I've been up there a few nights, I was born and raised in the town of Monaca. My dad and folks were immigrants from Hungary and Austria, coal miners. They had a work for paper five years before they were free on their own. I have a family of seven children. Three of us has written the service, and I still don't know. I'm just going to quote one. When I first got into politics, it was 1936, Roosevelt was campaigning through Monaca running against land. At that time, I had a job working for Mr. Visery, trapping mice in his flower room for penny amounts. And he said, if you caught a rat, it'd be a quarter, but he told me not to go out there to garbage him. So, anyway, after Roosevelt got loaned a few pennies out, Mr. Visery, he was an immigrant, he couldn't speak too good English anyway, and he looked down at me and he said, kid, what are you, a Democrat or Republican? This is heck no, I'm a Catholic. So that's how I ended up being a politician. I can tell you, I can tell you a lot of stories, and I've done everything. I was a gandhi dancer, I pitched and bailed hay, I worked as a cot carrier, I was a carpenter, an interior decker with a camel hair brushes and everything. There isn't a trade that I can't do or can still do at my age. And that's the reason these guys out there to Anderson Field after Muzowich and everything, they haven't had a, an ounce of seed or fertilizer put on that place for ten years. You've seen them messing it? To be honest with these guys here, that cost, you call it media, those people are paying eight, nine hundred dollars a lot to play this, right? I still play it, but what I'm saying, you have to do something because you have a nice golf course, you used to have people coming from Rome, different places, Ottawa come over and play. You never see a stranger on the course, no more.
Mr. Lansford.
And while I'm out here popping off, has these club manager ever approached you people about getting grass seed, fertilizer, a new lawnmower for the, so they can cut the greens and instead of cutting greens, they're oiling them now? Want to get some money at once appropriate? I know what I would do. It's imagine I had to put in for my budget, if I needed a new auger, dicker, I've got to get my money in if I want it. Other situation like I was talking to Jeremy about, Amberance Street. That's what we hadn't done about, a lot of people griping about that stuff. And then one other thing, while I'm off here turfing, what is your intent when you've got these people coming up to look at Pluto and that? You're teeing off on two. If somebody hits one of them individuals with the golf course, whose responsibility will it be? Will it be the clubs or the individual that hits them with blow? It can happen. They say, I've hit a moat side, that beautiful sidewalk and everything that you got there, that's fine. But it isn't, shouldn't be there because why do you disturb people that are dependent for recreation? At least we're paying our way and there, nobody else. And the people aren't going to give you a dime in the corner walking across that sidewalk? Say anything? Actually, like I say, I, I, before I leave with, I don't want to give you a present, but I want to show you what I have to flip that on there and try to hit a golf ball. I guess you know what that is, don't you? Supposed to be fairway. Now, anyway, Amberance Street, I guess they said they were going to kill something with it, but at least you should have left an opening there because when I ride my bicycle, I don't want to ride it that way because I might have hit two or three signs before I get through the barricades and that.
Okay, John.
Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I don't want to tell you any more stories, but I could tell you a lot.
Okay.
In fact, I never knew Jeremy come from my old line of neck for the woods in Winona. I could, he was young, it was a youngster at that.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Okay, I want to see something somewhere along the line because I wonder why I want to pay nine hundred dollars for your people if they don't want to do something for us.
Okay, John. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't want to take some okay home with you.
Your name is? Sennoban. And I reside at 614 North Everett Street. And I have lived next to, I guess you would call it, according to code, abandoned residential property. And I was going through the vacant building and property regulations, I spoke to Scott Wright about this before, and I want to know if the property owner is following the rules or the code for the obligations register because it has been vacant for probably eight years with the death of John Ashley. And I'm tied about the property at 616 North Everett Street. They do have somebody that comes and mows the grass, but basically it's vacant and I think all utility services are cut off. Okay, and then something else is congestion, 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 and I'm not talking about a pole. It is the traffic in front of Everett Towers when the ambulance, the fire department, the police are called. There's no parking on the east side, there's parking on the west, and there's traffic going to Streeter Onise into Owens. And it's pretty tricky when you got those guys pulled up there and in an emergency situation and parking with visitors that could park on, like Marrow Street or vacant the Everett Towers parking.
Okay. We'll look after both of these issues.
Okay. And then I would like to vote against the Dog Park by head start. A better fit might be James Street Recreation. And I vote against the location of the slash park, and I think James Street Recreation or Open Park would be a better fit. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Yeah, I do have some comments over, I don't know, over twelve on the agenda, so I don't know if this is the time to talk.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to new business, we'll move to agenda items. Item one?
Yeah, Council, item one is just a motion to receive and file a report from the Plan Commission. Voting to receive and file it doesn't mean that you are obligated to approve any of the recommendations of the Plan Commission, you vote on those separately, but it's been your practice to, to receive and file reports, so it's formally transmitted to you from the Plan Commission.
Okay. We can include all of these?
Yes.
Okay. I request a motion to place on the file the Plan Commission's recommendation 2017-06, approve a final plan for the Gulf Road Villas, Plan Commission's recommendation 2017-07, approve a preliminary development plan for the Gulf Road Villas, Plan Commission recommendation 2017-08, to approve a change in zoning and amending the zoning map for property commonly known as 116 South Everett Street, and Plan Recommendation 2017-09, approving a facade grant to Bill Schmidt for 311 East Main Street. Motion, please. So, your second. Second. Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item two?
Mayor, Council, items two and three really relate to the same thing, final file of preliminary development plan for Gulf Road Villas out on Gulf Road just west of Richard Street Baptist Church. I'm going to ask Jeremy to explain why there's two separate votes on these items.
Yeah, basically, for item number two, we'll approve a final plan. Mr. Fieldman, the petitioner is taking the four lots that he has currently, emerging them into one with a cul-de-sac roadway entering the property from the east and curving out over back to the west. And then the preliminary plan shows development of duplexes and triplexes in there. His phase one in the preliminary plan would be to construct the furniture homes, I believe there's ten along Gulf Road itself, and then eventually in phase two, work his way back and develop the condos around the cul-de-sac. He's developed, he's putting it into one parcel so that it can be managed by a homeowner's association or a condo association to limit it to 55 and older residents.
At your last meeting in August, you approved the rezoning of this property for recommendation from the Plan Commission, so now you have the final file of the preliminary development plan. The last piece of this, excuse me, will be action by the city council on a TIF redevelopment plan. We were not able to include that in the agenda because he doesn't have his condo association agreement in place, which is a component piece of the TIF redevelopment agreement. And we expect to have that for your October meeting.
There is a timeframe in here, isn't there? Is the meter running?
Yes, sir. The condition of the rezoning that you already approved is that he finish at least one of the units within one year of council action, so that clock has already started to run.
How about sewer, where we had a golf, a fertilizer, a pass seed?
The properties on, in the, what he wants to do is the properties on Gulf Road are phase one, and it will be to the south of that, and the back property is phase two. But he's, he's got sewer access.
There's actually the Area 20 sewer, that was installed 2006, which runs through that property, there's a 30-inch sewer running through the property.
All right, we'll take item two, entertain a motion to approve a final plan of the property for the Gulf Road Villas development. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item three, entertain a motion to approve a preliminary development plan for the Gulf Road Villa Development.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item four?
Council members, last week, when we had our starter monthly study session, you gave the green light to refinance the 2006 general obligation bonds and to initiate a new bond issue that are what are called alternative revenue bonds that we financed exclusively from TIF proceeds. The latter of those has a 30-day clock that has to run by statute before you can act on the bond ordinance. So this ordinance that is before you tonight is not a bond ordinance. The bond ordinance for both of those two issues, which will be separate, will come later. This ordinance simply starts that 30-day clock running on the alternative revenue TIF bond ordinance.
Entertain a motion authorizing the issuance of a not to exceed 1,325,000 general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing eligible redevelopment projects within the city's tax increment financing districts. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item five?
Item five comes as a recommendation to you from the Plan Commission, and it is a facade grant, but it is not like all the other facade grants, and so I'd like you to explain how it's different than the other facade grants.
This is, again, a Plan Commission item from last week that was recommended. Three levels made is Don's Furniture. Mr. Schmidt came in with a proposal to basically refurbish the sign that says Don's Furniture. He's looking to take down blue panels and install brighter blue panels to make it look like it did when it was first installed. We spoke with him, and if you all remember, in the artist concept drawings of the concept block, it showed awnings on the second floor windows of all those businesses in the concept block. Spoke with Mr. Schmidt about the inclusion of those, and he was agreeable to doing that. So this, his plan for 311 East Main is to rehab the sign that says Don's Furniture as well as install the, I believe, 11 awnings on the second floor windows to make it match the artist concept.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize a grant, a facade grant to Bill Schmidt, owner of 311 East Main Street, with an amount of 15,000 dollars. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item six?
Item six is the last of the items recommended to you by the Plan Commission at their last meeting, and as a rezoning request on South Everett Street, the petitioner is here, so I'd like Jeremy to give the report from the Plan Commission, and then if you'd like, you can take additional comment from the petitioner.
Again, this was recommended by the Plan Commission last week. Mr. Rikensi is looking to demolish the home of 116 South Everett Street directly behind the box seats establishment to install parking at that spot, so the house will come down and parking lot will go up. He's aware of the city codes regarding the construction of the parking lot and the fencing required. There'll be a fence required on the south property line and the west property line adjacent to the homes, there's no shining of lights, car lights or anything like that through the, through the homes. So, again, it was recommended by Plan Commission.
That's the house right south of the driveway?
Right, right south of the alley behind box.
Yeah. I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance approving a change in zoning and amendment of the district zoning map for property at 116 South Everett Street. Owner, Todd Rikensi. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Petitioner needs to?
Do you have anything to add?
Any other questions? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item seven?
At the special meeting we had last week, you authorized the appropriation of $200,000 for this project, and now we had a bidding yesterday on that, and so we're ready to proceed. The amount of the low bidder was slightly over the engineer's estimate by $9,000 or so. So, but that amount can be sustained by the mortgage tax funds, so we don't have to reduce the scope and size of the project. Anything I'm missing?
No, it'll just be from Monday to 12:00.
Yeah.
And how quickly are they planning?
Approval here requires I.D., site half on everything, so a couple of weeks we'll get the contracts back, and then they've been told we want it done this year.
This year?
Yeah.
So. Entertain a motion to authorize a new construction contract for the mill and resurfacing of a portion of South Illinois Street to Toby's Construction and Party to eat, personally. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item eight?
Mayor, Council, I apologize for getting to this kind of late, but let me give you some more background on this. This has to do with the proposed agreement with Johnson Controls to do the retrofit of street lighting in Streeter. Not only street lighting, which is the principal part of the project, but also replacement of outdated lighting at the wastewater treatment plant and at the Streeter Fire Department. The inside of the light lights that are really antiquated, and the council talked about this way back in February of this year, and at that time, we had proposals from two contractors who would do the study, determine what the payback period would be, and then, and then proceed. And council said, pick the one that's, that's the best and then bring it back to the council for, for action on an agreement. After that, the rules started to change with Commonwealth Edison and DCEO's programs for rebate. And plus, we found that we were able to obtain some of the light fixtures directly from the supplier in a way that would help us to short circuit some of the middlemen and reduce the cost even further, and thereby reduce as well the payback period, and so that's why this is so long getting back to you. The different elements of the project, I think the four elements of the project are outlined in the transmittal memo, so I won't repeat all that, but the agreement is not for the replacement of the lights. The agreement is for the study that Johnson Controls will conduct to find out how many lights can be reduced, where the wattages need to change, because when we change these over from principally high-pressure sodium lights, and not exclusively HPS lights, but most of them are high-pressure sodium lights, to LEDs, the number of lights that we need will likely go down. For example, there's seven streetlights that service the North Point Highway 23 intersection. Probably, we've all driven by it so many times, and I realize that there's that many. We don't need that many, especially when there are the LED lights. So we'll see some reduction in lights, which will save money, and of course, the production energy costs will save us a great deal of money. Exactly how much and where does each light need to go and what does the wattage need to be, because obviously in commercial areas, the wattage needs to be higher than it would be in residential areas. That's what the study is for. And so this document sets forth the parameters and the scope of the study, and basically says that, that for some reason, we decided not to go with Johnson Controls once we moved into the retrofit stage, and we'd pay them back for their engineering. I will tell you that we've done enough due diligence, and I'm perfectly confident with Johnson Controls, they had the best proposal, and so my request is that even though I've described all this in the cover memo, and even though I'm giving you this draft that we're still working on with Johnson Controls, it'd be my request that you authorize the manager to, once we have it all perfected, to enter into an agreement that at least gets us through that engineering phase. Reason for the hurry up is that Commonwealth Edison is now in charge of what used to be run by the state, these reimbursement programs for when you have energy-efficient lights. Between now and the end of this year, we apply for rebate on the lights that we own and the fixtures we own, which is about 15% of the total inventory. And after the first of the year, it's a separate rebate program for the 85% that we don't own, that we essentially lease from Commonwealth Edison on Commonwealth Edison hold. So we'll be focusing first on getting the ones approved that are on 15% inventory right after the study is done.
So you're asking for approval now for the engineering study? And do we have any idea what that's going to cost?
I believe the answer will be, assuming that we stay with Johnson Controls, the answer is zero.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Because they're going to advertise that back in the retrofit process. We would only have to pay that if we decided, okay, thanks for the study, now we're going to go get somebody else. It's about 20,000 dollars worth of work.
I entertain a motion authorizing the street lighting agreement with Johnson Controls.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
So there's some urgency that you're moving on?
Yes, there is. Thank you.
Item nine?
Well, earlier this year, the city was fortunate enough to receive a $450,000 grant from the state of Illinois for the Barlow Sewer Project in that area that was recently annexed to the city of Streeter down in the southeast part of town. The state, as of 2016, has instituted a whole series of what they call GADA rules. I'm not sure what GADA stands for. Do you know what?
You have to run like accountability transparency.
Ah, there it is. And the reason he knows is because he did all the hard work to comply with the GADA requirements after we got awarded the grant. It took so much time that we have largely lost the 2017 construction season, so, and we had to do all this GADA compliance that Jeremy did so well before we could even enter into a grant agreement with the state. It's done, we are now there, and Jeremy's to be complimented for his hard work. So you approve this grant agreement now with the state, we can bid the project yet this year. Depending on who the contractor is, he might choose to start in cold weather, but obviously the bulk of the work will be done during the 2018 construction season. Would you like to give?
Basically, the wonderful, there is, this is not the final agreement, this is a draft agreement. We expect the actual agreement to be within the next two weeks, that'll be prior to your next meeting, so we'd ask that you approve it tonight, give the mayor authorization, assign him investment, just to signal those couple of weeks that people want to start.
Entertain a motion authorizing a grant agreement with the state of Illinois government in the distribution and administration of the CDBG grant and installation of stores and Barlow's addition.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Now, are we notifying homeowners to render the delay or what's happening?
Yes, I've talked to several of the homeowners, and after we have the bid, but we can technically go out to bed and tell you you have signed the agreement, so as soon as we do that, I've told pretty much the majority of the homeowners down there that as soon as we know who the contractor will be when we have a low bid, we'll have a neighborhood meeting and let them know the schedule.
Okay, thank you. Item 10?
From time to time, the city sells surplus property that you have determined has, has no use for the city purposes, and we have three lots in three separate locations around town where we would like to begin that process. It's not so easy for local governments to sell property compared to private individuals, and we have to advertise it. First, we have to appraise it, then we have to advertise it, we have to disclose that you can submit bids for 80% or more of the appraised value, then we open those bids, and then it's your discretion as to whether or not you want to sell it after that. If we don't have anybody who bids at the 80% rate, then we have to sit on it for six months more while we try to sell it, and if that doesn't work, then you pass a separate resolution authorizing the manager to try to just get whatever price we can. So these three sites are at the beginning of this, of this process, and so by approving this resolution, you are starting that process for these three sites.
So we're taking a proactive approach?
810 South Bloomington Street was a property that was abandoned for some time and had a fire on it. It was perhaps well-known for, for a while until it burned, or somebody, or an unknown vandal who in red spray paint wrote condemned on it and dispelled it with a K. Perhaps someone can remember that. The 517 East Main Street is the site of the former T.T. building and now has a sign on it. And 211 South Park is property that also had a house on it, it was a subject of a fire, the owner took it down, and then rather than try to sell it, he simply transferred it to the city.
Now, will we redo this process for additional surplus properties? What do we have to do?
I don't understand the question.
We're doing this proactively now, going through this process, because it's a step process we have to do. We're doing this proactively now, going through this process, because it's a step process we have to do. And once we've got it appraised, we'll put it out for bids, and they don't come in to meet that appraised value or anything new, then we can have it available right then and there to sell if somebody wants to come in and make an offer?
Yes, and that's why it's important to do this now. I mean, if you were, if one of these parcels, you don't get the price that you believe that is appropriate to pay back the taxpayers' cost in this, and you just want to sit on it, then you have met this requirement. And so then if somebody subsequently comes in and offers a price that is satisfactory to you, then this process doesn't have to be repeated. It's out of the way.
My question is, is that this is three pieces of property that we have. Do we have additional properties? Or if we do have, if we do have additional properties that comes to our control, would we do the same thing so that if somebody that we might not be moving on selling that, if we have something, make us an offer on that?
You're asking about parcels of land that are not a subject of this resolution?
Yeah.
We have several parcels of land that have already been through this process and are at different stages in the process. Is there a particular parcel that?
No, I just know that the getting appraisals on property, the cost is probably going to increase. So we have some additional properties now. We can have appraised at a lower fee rather than wait next year to do it when the fees may go up.
When we have, we usually use the same appraisal leave company. And when we do them, we try to bunch them so that we get sort of a discount rate. And we've done that in the past, and we'll continue to do so in the future. What I hadn't thought of is trying to move up some because if you'd like, we could have, council would like to get up to date on the parcel of land that we have and sort of give additional instructions on which ones you consider surplus. Could probably do that, probably be an executive session.
Yeah, okay.
What is it, five years? Or you can cut it loose?
Six months.
Six months. For the whole process?
If we don't get bids that are satisfactory to the city council, and another six months has to proceed, during which we're supposed to do our best to try to sell them, and then at that point, you pass another resolution, and we've done this a couple of times. You pass a resolution basically authorizing the city manager to get the right, the best price we can. At that point, we don't have to follow the 80% threshold. But until then, we can't sell it for less than 80% of the appraised value.
So it's a year?
Well, from start to finish, it might take that long. But from the time that we take the bids until you can proceed next, that one step is six months.
I entertain a motion authorizing sale of surplus city property.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Meade?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough? Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item eleven?
In the past, we've had to re-adopt the downtown facade programs, rules, and regulations. But Jeremy has worked with Jacob and Klein, our TIF council, to put an end to that. So why don't you explain just more background on that?
Yeah, basically, the program started in 2014. The council has adopted it every year. It's just that it's been a housekeeping step to re-adopt the program every year. It came up during the TIF audit that was done, it's part of your TIF bonding that just came up. So I worked with Jacob and Klein, with Gwen, to look at, this ordinance in front of you, if you adopt it tonight, will basically allow the program to continue until it's stopped by the council. But it only will be effective in years where you put money in the budget. So if there's no money in the budget, the program doesn't exist. But years that money is obligated in the budget process, then the program will be there. It's basically a funded or unfunded program every year in the budget process rather than an extra step. So that's what this ordinance will do.
I entertain a motion to approve adopting the Streeter Downtown Building Facade and Replacement Grant and Loan Program.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Meade?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Item twelve?
In 2015, the city council adopted a policy that governs how you go about vacating streets and alleys, right-ofways that in the cities of Michigan are no longer needed to be used as right-ofways. We don't get a lot of requests for that, but we did have one here. So Jeremy, why don't you walk through first the process that we went through? And then, then why the question tonight?
Yeah, the process basically requires that, it's a notification process. The process requires that we mailed out a letter to everyone within 250 feet of the vacated alley or proposed vacated alley, so they can come and give comment, as was one here tonight. In addition, we also posted signs on the alley itself, so that everyone would see that it was up for vacation. That's the process steps that we went through. The petitioner is also here to talk about it. He's petitioning to basically, for privacy, he would like to connect a fence from his, that's essentially used mainly as his driveway. He'd like to run a fence to the north and then along the Casey's property for privacy. And I'll let him speak to that.
I'm not going to motion.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Now, what's your next?
I'm just looking for some privacy, doing that air pump section of Casey's because it's really busy. There's content, a little traffic there alive. It's hard to get some privacy in my backyard because it faces Casey's, basically. And there's a lot of garbage that comes up from the dumpster when they dump that periodically. I mean, it's not, it's just something that comes into my yard every so often. We should try and prevent that. And really, I mean, I'm the only one that really uses that alley that needs access back there, I believe. And I know you can enter from the other way also, from the south. And I'm looking just to vacate the, from the east to the west side of it. I don't have any pictures. I didn't bring anything with me, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got the mailing that Jeremy was referring to. So my name's Robert Beersley. I live at 107 South Otter Creek. So the alley in question runs east and west, and it actually runs right into my property, the back of my property. So as you can imagine, that is a direct route to the back of my property. So I do use the alley, and so I want to continue to be able to use that alley. It's not feasible to come from the south, because if you were to look at a flat map, you're going across three of our properties, where this is already gravelled to 80% of it, roughly. And the alley does go right up to my property line. And I'm looking in the future to actually expand and actually put up a garage facing the alleyway as well. So, but the perfect solution to what the petitioner's talking about is, I just have issues with Casey's property with debris and noise and things like that. I've been working with Jeremy on the lighting as well over there, and I know he's helped me get with them on putting a privacy fence up, which would be on the west side right there, up to Casey's building. So that might be an option, if you just put a privacy fence on Casey's property line right there. But I would ask that we leave that alley open. I do use it, I have used it, and I would like to continue to use it. And that is the direct routes up to my property.
Did you attend the planning commission meeting?
This item does not go through planning commission?
What does that?
No.
This was the only notification.
It, under the process, it goes straight to you? Is, is, I think Jeremy was under the impression that you don't use the alley right now. So you're trying to, you want to protect the possibility of using it?
I do use it currently, and I do want to use it. I have several vehicles now, so in the last year, we picked up inherited two motor drivers in the family. So I have to be able to put a concrete slab in the back and/or eventually a garage facing that alleyway. Because I agree with you, the road as we know is very limited. There's really no off-road parking on the driveway, so, yeah.
But if you're on Otter Creek Street, then you don't adjoin the alley in question?
Yes, from Birmingham, right there. If I go Birmingham on the east side of Birmingham, I can take that all the way across into my property. The alley is actually platted across Mr. Beersley's property to Otter. And the opening could be made on Otter Creek as well. Yeah, because when I look at the zoning, that alley goes east from Birmingham to Otter Creek, and from, east from Bridge towards Casey's. Like, it would go out towards Main Street if Casey wasn't there, maybe? I don't know how it used to run entirely. It actually, it ends at the intersection of the two alleys. There's two alleys. There's an east-west alley that runs from Otter, a platted alley. It's unimproved across Mr. Beersley's property from Otter Creek to the rear. And then there's some gravel further to the east that leads up to Mr. Beersley's rear yard and Mr. Beersley's garage. I put the gravel down, so I wasn't driving through dirt and sand to get to my, just to get to my garage. But previously, there was gravel. I just put, there was gravel down there, it's just that it said, Saint Ken. You elected to, yeah. I've only lived there since 2000, late 2014. Right.
Do you have access from the south between the homes?
No, I don't have access. No. It's no obstructions, but it's not. There's no, there's a tree there. You're not going to get back there, I don't think. There's a tree, and there's a power line right there as well that's beaten into Casey's. I mean, you can't get a vehicle back there now. I mean, you would have to. But you can come from where, Bridge Street is the dead end, you could come from that way if you need to get to his backyard, because that alley goes.
That's where, say, from the south, Bridge Street.
Yeah, yeah. But you would have to cross through three or four properties, actually. That's an alley, though. That's not their property. But this is an alley as well. I mean, so we're going to. The alley goes. This is 80% already gravelled, but this is an alley right here that's going to my property. And we're saying we're going to use another one that's all grass right now. I think we would have other residential property owners up here saying, what are we doing there for? But that's still legally an alley, and you can drive through it, I mean. But that don't make sense. I mean, we got to look at feasibility as well. Because I was actually asking, who was it? I don't know if it was Jeremy back in the earlier days, or whatever cases, when he was doing the project, but if there was even a case of even gravel in that all the way to my property with the anticipation of getting a garage there in the future. So, I mean, I don't look for this to be gravelled, and why would we want to gravel all that? That's going to be 300 feet, 400 feet. And then you'd be putting ruts in these other yards. I mean, I know people are maintaining that as well. And this is a direct route. I mean, I just. From the feasibility and, you know, it makes sense. I think just coming off of Birmingham has made the best sense for me currently in going into my backyard.
Is there something we need to take a, more in-depth look at?
I think so.
I do want me to vacate an alley. I mean, you only have two properties. It's 50/50, I mean. You know, I would think you'd make sense if the order should happen.
But as I understand it, your property doesn't physically adjoin the portion that's to be vacated?
Yes, sir, it actually does. No, it is, it's, you're all by 20 feet, so, but yes, it goes to your place.
He's not an adjoint, he's an affected property owner, because he, because his argument is that he can and should be able to use it. But his property doesn't physically adjoin the alley section?
It would be vacated. It is alley, yeah, it would be vacated at the, at the west side of his garage, essentially. And so, again, you'd have access to the south, but, yeah, there might be some to look at. But not up to there, that would be vacated, though. Yeah, yeah, for Birmingham, yeah, for Birmingham would be vacated. Right.
I think we need to look at.
That's what it looks like.
Yep. So what do we do?
You would hold it over till the next meeting? That's actually our initial motion to that effect, since there's now a motion on the floor. My only question would be, what additional information would you like to have? Or maybe it's just necessary that you ought to look at it?
At least, basically, we want to take a look at, you know. Like, you put, Jeremy. I'd like some information on how soon you plan on building your garage and stuff, too. Our decision.
Do you know with the fence? Is he asking, let's say, you're paid to the fence?
No, no. We just vacate the property, and then it's the, and then it's the petitioner's responsibility to file the vacation ordinance, you know, with the county at his expense. And then if he wants to put a fence up, then it's no longer our property, so he has to.
I entertain a motion to hold it over to the next meeting.
So moved.
Your second?
Okay.
Any other discussion?
The only thing I would add, if I could, is this would impact other homeowners. If we elected to go south up of that, what is it, Bridge Street? Because now we're going to be tearing up that one, and, you know, over 20 feet right here, because the rest of it's gravelled.
Thank you.
Clerk, call roll, please.
Meade?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
We sort of have lines, isn't it? Zoom in more.
Yeah, she's already zoomed in. I have 13.
Mayor Council, it's my recommendation that we change auditors and that we hire the auditing and financial services firm of Stickich LLP out of Naperville. I believe you have a comparison of, and our analysis of the different auditing proposals that we received, we received four. And Julie Lucas and Wesley and I talked with them and did reference checks. So I believe this is the best proposal for us going forward for the next three fiscal years, including the one in the year currently, and in December 31st.
I entertain a motion authorizing the awarding and accounting services for all municipal fiscal years in 2017, 2018, and 2019?
So moved.
Your second? Any other discussion?
Just one, it says Kemper, and I'm, that's not one I need familiar with, but it says good, but all small jurisdictions, device is small.
All of the jurisdictions that they provide auditing services for are smaller than the city of Streeter. They're all smaller.
Any other comments? Clerk, call roll, please.
Meade?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mary Lansford?
Aye.
Mayor Council, the, there are some Commonwealth Edison slash NYCOR services issues with Harth Scrabble Park that need additional resolution. It's going to take, take us more than another year to resolve. And the Lions Club, Harth Scrabble Lions Club, was desirous of completing the Dog Park project during their centennial year, which is, I think, is this year, this year and next, whatever. And so when we realized, earlier this month, or late last month, that we were encountering this problem with the utilities, I contacted Budwall and told him about the problem, notified you as well. And so we explored different sites and gave them four different possibilities. Those four sites were then reviewed by the Parks and Open Spaces Board at their last meeting last week. And Parks and Open Spaces Board has made a recommendation to you, based on those four sites that we've screened, as to which one they would recommend that be added. Their recommendation is that a site on the west side of Oakland Park adjoining Sterling Street, but south of what Brumbach Street extended would be, you know, if extended into the park, is where their recommendation is for it. There are no students anymore, I mean, what, regular elementary school students anyway, attending Oakland School. It is true that the head start, that rents space from Oakland School. The Oakland Park, which is owned by the city, not the school district, was the site for many years. As you know better than I, I think for Polish picnic and several other events that were, over the years, came to be associated with that park, but those events are no longer there. And so I think that the Park and Open Spaces Board thought this might provide some additional identity for the park. One of the other sites that the Lions Club looked at was more to the southeast part of Oakland Park, where they could make it, where they could use the existing fence that separates the park from the BNSF right-ofway. I think they wisely decided against that, because it's, then it's right next to all the noise of the trains and would probably not be conducive to having a dog park. So this is the one that they selected and that they recommend to you. And it's representative from the Lions Club here, if you have some additional questions about what their objectives are.
Jim, do you like to make any comments?
I think you've pretty much said everything. We are trying, this is our year of our 100th. We are trying, this is our year of our 100th anniversary, and this is a legacy project that the International is trying to get each club to have. We have started out with Hardscrabble Park, and that was super explaining the way we wanted to go until we found the issue of the ground with the comment. And then we viewed four other places, which was stated. And while all would theoretically be acceptable, some are, this is probably most acceptable of the four.
Entertained a motion to place on file the Hardscrabble Lions Club recommendation for the new location for the Dog Park.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Technically, we're not placing on file. The park board is asking you to reckon, to approve their recommendations. Sorry.
To approve, okay. When I reread it again. Motion to place, motion to approve Hardscrabble Lions Club recommendation for a new location for the Dog Park.
So moved.
Your second? Any other discussion?
Actually, I, right before this meeting, I was contacted by someone in the neighborhood, and I think this person doesn't feel like they were asked enough, like that the neighborhood was not included. For example, with the alley, we have so many, within so many feet. Can I support the project? And I don't want to push it back, but I just want to make sure, or wonder if we should be doing more diligence with this and just verifying that this won't be an issue for those who are there.
Couple of Beady's comments, well taken. There is no prescribed notification method. I did ask Bud to talk to some of the property owners who are the closest to the proposed site, and I know that he did talk to some of them.
We're good.
But, and, but I think that he wasn't able to reach all of them either. So, but there was no direct mailing either, so it's not unreasonable to think that they wouldn't have accepted, would have not been contacted by, by the Lions Club when they were doing their programs.
Did you talk to Mr. Hartar?
We talked to the, there's a street housing that would be facing the west side of the park there.
Jim's actually in the, or Andy's in the park. Actually, I mean, if you look at it, this is...
One of ours ran across the street. We talked to him. He owns the house next door to him also. And the third house down there was...
Joe's talking about the one that lives at the corner of James Street and Sterling, the northeast corner.
So that would, no, we did not talk to him. And one of the reasons we didn't want to go to the, number three, was it would be right next door.
It was even closer to his house.
And there's no buffer at all here. There's leave, we're not going to be left right up to a property. There are, there are trees that is a buffer. We're at least a lot, there's, if I was looking across the street, and I mentioned awful lots of them across the street, there'd be at least a lot between the end of our park and the beginning of his property. But no, I did not talk, we did not talk to him.
It won't be lit.
Lighting's not a part of the project, is it?
No, but this is something that we would like to maybe consider in the future though.
Actually, that's probably something that should give an additional consideration by the park board too, because I think the intention is that this is a daylight use, in which case lighting may not be necessary. I think that it's important that everybody know that this is not a kennel. It's not like, you know, dogs are always going to be in control of their, of their owners. This is something for day use when their owners want to bring them out and let them run without a leash. So, you know, the notion that we were going to have dogs barking at 2:00 at night is, that's not what a dog park is for. And having lighting there may actually be counterproductive to what you want in that neighborhood. But that's, but that's not a part of the current...
The one person we talked to, he was, had concerns about that people, things going on in that park at night. Now, we are having, as we posted, that this is open only during the day, like 8 to 7 or whatever daylight hours. That's actually open at night time. But they did express some concerns about some interesting activities going on over there. And this viper tail, some of those activities.
Generally speaking, the more authentic activities you have in any park tends to chase away the activities you don't want in the park.
Just the traffic from the south. Dirk, call the roll, please.
Beady?
Nay. Just because I want to make sure we just go more into it, but...
Can I call something?
She's at the middle of the roll.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
I think under the circumstances, could you talk with the club about making sure that there's some additional outreach to the neighborhood?
Sure.
Yes, I, I do support the project. I just, we had the issue with the alley, and we had to change our ordinances because of a prior alley, not this one, but notification of so many people within, I think it's 250 feet. And again, I just, I hate to have someone, or has to have to reverse it and take more time. So that's really my only issue with it. So I...
Entertained a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Dirk, call the roll, please.
Beady?
Aye.
Crouch?
Mayor, do you want to have the normal extensions recorded in the minutes for C for Councilman Crouch and B for Councilman...
I have staying firm. I have C.
As well as being...
Marilyn.
Aye.
Brian, anything? No?
I'm just sending them up to the dog park. I have, we got a little gaggle.
Entertained a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Beady?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.